Alright, welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board meeting for August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. I'll stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of the name is to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just.
Don't need a alternate, if I need, so everybody get a chance for their minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from August third, as written.
All second?
All in favor?
Opposed?
Opposed. Alright, old business, Matt Leck, Nason Road, map two-three-zero, lot zero-zero-five-dash-zero-zero-two, conditional use, application for storage of rental equipment. Come on up, please. I think we're at the point. Matt, to, uh...
Didn't we do the checklist?
Oh, we did, but...
So I, I wasn't sure, mine was blank, so I don't know if somebody has one that was actually checked off. Matt, do you know, remember if we went through, like, eight, like, uh...
Maybe.
I mean, it's not gonna hurt to go through them again, I don't have it on record, so if you guys don't mind just reading through them again.
I don't remember.
Yeah, there was, we didn't do anything, I think we even, the only thing we had discussed was making sure that he stayed outside of the, uh, resource protection area. But...
Right, right, that, and I...
And that the spill kit would be flagged out.
Right, it was gonna be marked, stay away from that bushwhack.
Yeah, spill kit.
Spill kit.
Do we wanna read you through these again? Yes?
Yes, please, I just wanna have it on, in the file.
Want me to do it? Okay, "The use will not have adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat."
Yes, it will not.
"The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies."
N A.
"The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan."
Yes.
"Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards of this ordinance."
Yes.
"The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations."
Is the...
It's not in the flood zone.
Not in the flood zone, no.
N A, N A.
"Adequate protection for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made."
Won't be any water. I'm not gonna have water, that's what we're talking about.
Uh, yeah, solid wastes, sewage, things like that.
Oh, yeah.
"Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made."
Are you gonna be doing oil changes there, fluid changes of any sort?
No, we talked about that.
So everything will be trailered somewhere else?
Yep.
But you are gonna have some, sorry, you're gonna have some sort of spill kit on here?
Yeah.
So that would go into this.
At some point, you still have a shed for that.
At some point?
Yeah, 'cause we don't, like...
Can we put a condition that you'll put up a shed within a year, or what's a comfortable amount of time for it?
I just don't know how soon I'm actually gonna use the property.
He's only doing this just in case.
Right, but it's hard for us to...
No, I get where you're going with that.
Can't you put a kit and a drum?
Sure, how about, once I start putting equipment there, I'll have a kit there, does that work?
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause maybe you could store it in the, a piece of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, once I start having equipment there, I'll make sure that's there.
Yeah, for sure, times, I don't know what your business is like exactly, but do you rent these pieces of equipment out?
Yes.
So sometimes you bring it back, there's a blown hydraulic line or whatever, and you might end up bringing it to the yard.
Definitely should happen, yep, definitely.
Okay, so spill kit, as soon as any equipment is, is there?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
"A stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed."
Are you gonna have any sort of, uh, pervious si- surface there, pavement or concrete or...
No.
It's already on a gravel pad, pretty much.
It's pretty much just like, oh, yeah.
There's a log landing at one point.
Bit soil.
Yeah, okay.
"Adequate provisions to control erosion and sedimentation have been made." Not doing, doing any digging or anything?
No, no do you.
Just bushwhacking.
"There's adequate water supply to meet the demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes." It's kinda next to that low area, but that's really non-applicable, isn't it?
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't really have a water supply there, you don't have a well.
You don't have, the, the proposed use doesn't really have any demands for water, does it?
No, it's lit, we're just looking at a storage, and that's it. No maintenance, no working on stuff, no bathrooms.
"The provision for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detriment, detrimental features of the development, such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like."
Yeah, the only close property is actually a berm that's about, I don't know, eight feet high on one side, it's fairly tall. On the actual side of there, there's the closest house, which is, I don't know, five hundred feet away or so, I'd say.
Yeah, you couldn't see anything.
Yeah, you can't actually see the house from the property.
"All performance stand..."
How about with the, I'm sorry, how about with the, uh, road? What was the question about the road?
There's a natural buffer right there, and...
Yeah.
So do we wanna, um, just ask that a, a natural buffer is of twenty-five feet is maintained with the road?
Yep.
Off the road?
Yeah, off the twenty-five feet on the side of the road?
Yeah, that seems...
Just for visibility for people driving by?
Yeah, there's that already, I think, but...
Yeah, 'cause it's kind of...
Let's do it.
But he might mow it down, or someone in the future might mow it down.
It's kind of a natural driveway, the way it goes in now, but yeah, that's no problem.
Nice.
"All performance standards and standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use we've met."
Yes.
Yep.
"Archaeological and historic resources, as designed in the comprehensive plan, will be protected."
Yes. I was wondering if there was a size area that you were gonna be mowing, so to speak? Is it fairly defined, or is it just kind of ambiguous?
Yeah, I think it's, there's a set of plans that I think that we were gonna kind of follow, that open area.
In that, on that plan you're looking at, Gavin, the green, um, the green area that says proposed outdoor storage is, that's all a landing already. There's no trees, there's just a gravel pad with some, um, long scr- um, scruff grass and, and...
Bone.
Yeah.
They're just gonna use that existing opening.
This is a three, uh, block of wood?
We gotta have a...
Mine's color.
Additional not to...
Right, we wanna have that black or steep, please. Yeah, and over here, maybe too?
Yeah.
What is that?
Oh, he's got, John's got a colored one.
Right. This says it's half an acre. Are you gonna expand it beyond the half an acre?
I'm not gonna expand it on, beyond what we had on the plans, whatever that was, I don't...
Alright, well, I just hold you, half acres on the plan, that's what we...
Yeah.
Hold you to.
You kinda get into that, to expand it, you have to get into that, surely, a zoning area.
Yeah.
That buffer, that we didn't want to deal with. And then the left side, the property actually drops off anyways, so that wouldn't be usable anyways, so...
And it looks like there's a small wetland coming off of the road, so to speak, off of Nason Road, to the right as you're entering the property. Kinda right near where it says proposed ten-by-twenty shed.
He's talking, I don't know if you can see this fire, we're talking about up in that area there. It's, I don't even know if it's there, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure, that's where the berm is, there's a berm that goes up right there, where they push this gravel over. I'm not sure what's, what's there for, I didn't think there was any wetland on that side.
I didn't either, but I don't know.
Is that what that symbol means?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it looks like the shed, the proposed shed's not in the limits of existing cleared area, correct?
It's all like scrubbed grass and stuff like that, where the, where we go. Yeah, probably just brush hog that area a little bit.
I could, I could put the shed outside of it, 'cause it's literally a hill. It's like, it's like a, there's a berm to go outside of the proposed area.
That's like...
It looks like it's outside.
Right, well, I think we should get the shed inside the proposed...
Yeah, yeah, we could put it towards the area. Yeah, we can definitely put it wherever, I, I don't care.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't, I mean, I think if we, I don't know how you wanna play it, but if we just make it a condition...
I'm writing, "A storage shed will be located within the, uh..."
Half acre.
Half acre landing?
Yeah.
Half acre cleared area?
This thing clearing, yeah.
Storage area, whatever, yeah, existing.
And then we're gonna mark or flag so you don't go beyond...
Okay. The two-fifty setback?
Over here? Is that what it was?
Small wetland in this.
It's just that, it's that buffer, that two...
That dark one, right? Oh, yeah, yeah, that was it, yeah, that's right.
And the, right.
Yeah, this buffer, right.
Shed wouldn't have any permanent components, right, it'd be just kinda sitting on...
Yeah, just blow off.
There'd be no permanent footings or anything like that?
Delineated, I guess.
Would you be willing to put some metal stakes with flagging along the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback from the...
Sure.
Wetland, just in the very, you know, just for maybe every fifty or a hundred feet, for a couple hundred feet in the, in the area where you're...
Yeah, are you not allowed to drive in those type of areas?
Well, that's, I was just gonna say, there's that dirt bike trail that goes through there, so if you put a robe across and something comes looking through, it gives me a...
I know you can't, like, build and you, like, use it, but I didn't know if we could make it so that it wasn't something like permanent, like a metal stake that...
Well, I mean, like a fence post, just so that in ten years, the thing hasn't fallen, you know, the flagging hasn't fallen down or rotted or disappeared on us. Just more permanent, and you could pull it right out of that, but...
Okay.
I mean, you, you're allowed to use that trail that goes through the R P, but you, you're not supposed to expand it or use it as like a driveway unless, unless we give you approval.
Mm-hmm.
But you can use it kind of as it is used now, maybe A T V, do A T Vs use that thing right now?
That's what that red, that's a yellow.
For you, with, uh, just A T V'ers coming through and ending up in your contractor yard?
So the plan was, is to actually kind of fence that off, make them go around, 'cause there's other trails around. I was more saying that, like, to put up, you know, say there's an open area and to put up stakes, it just didn't seem necessary, I guess, in my mind.
Yeah, well, it's just, just a more permanent type of survey flag than tying it to a bush.
Okay.
But... As, as long as you're not encroaching on that area and it's flagged somehow, I think they'd be happy, but you do wanna kind of figure out the A T Vs, maybe.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's just local traffic, so I was just gonna have them, make, make them go around it.
Where does that trail go?
Just to the road, and then it goes back to, the local people use it to get, like, in the wintertime, it's mostly snowmobiles, to get to the lake. You can get to the lake that way.
It connects to, like, uh...
You can go into, uh, you can go all the way back to, uh, Plant.
Peppin's.
Yeah, it's harder now, though, that since Plant opened his pit up and, and then the other one, Peppin's old pit, now...
But it will bring you to Westshore Drive, isn't it?
Old dollar, was a valuable property.
Well, does anybody feel like we need to make any sort of condition about P T V traffic, or are you not concerned about that?
Are you gonna gate off the entrance there for your spot? It already has a gate. There already is a gate, yeah. But they've been going around it on both sides. Like I said, probably Ryan, you know, coming through private property.
Well, you just wouldn't want any of those people maybe monkeying with your equipment, I guess.
Yeah, no, it's, it's true, yeah. Probably know most of them, but...
Right.
Use it, but I know you're saying it.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as we get that, um, R P line delineated there.
Yep. I think I can just have Joe put some flags up.
So pretty much, yeah.
Stakes.
I'm gonna pass that around, spill kit one, so if somebody can...
Right, we'll re, we'll have to read those off again with the motion.
I have them written down, if somebody wants them, just when they make their motion, they can read the bottom of that.
It's one of you guys, maybe, just... I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve, um... The conditional use application for Matt Leck at map two-thirty, lot zero-zero-five, tech zero-zero-two, um, for the storage of rental equipment, with the conditions that a spill kit will be present once equipment is stored on the property, that a natural twenty-five-foot buffer will be maintained along the road, that the proposed storage shed be located within the half-acre cleared area, and that the resource protection, uh, area will be flagged in the proposed area of use. Anyone, one second?
One second, man.
All in favor? I'm standing. I oppose?
You're supposed to explain why you're standing.
Just, he's my boss.
There you go, he'd like to hear that, he likes to hear it.
Yeah, he likes it, puts a smile on his face.
John, can I get that, can I get those conditions back, so I can write them, can you write the permit or function on them?
Sometime in the next six months.
We'll get to it.
All set, Ben?
You good to go?
Awesome, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. See ya.
Yes.
Is he your little helper?
Sometimes, yeah.
Cool.
He's actually better than some of the... Alright, uh, new business, none. Pending projects, Sasha, Sasha Smith.
I'm gonna be taking that, do you guys remember what the timeframe is for that? I was looking in the ordinance the other day, there's a certain timeframe for, um, applications, once they, and I thought it was like, I thought it was ninety days or something like that, I can't remember, but we went through this with O'Keefe, and next meeting, the engineer's coming in for that storage unit on Fox's Ridge Road. A preliminary, they're coming in, what do you guys want, that situation?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, for site plan review.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, so they'll be in here, um, first week in September for preliminary application conference, um, questioning, whatever.
Did you, you been down there?
I went down there for a septic system on the main property, but yeah, I saw the digging.
They're, they're working on it, yeah, yeah. Cool, yeah, we'll do a site log.
Isn't it one year for the application?
I'm not even sure, I couldn't find anything in the actual ordinance, I thought I saw something in site plan review, um, procedure, but not in conditional use. But this was, yeah, this is for the Sasha Smith in-home daycare, I just haven't heard from her, she, I, I called her back in May or June, and she said she wasn't doing anything right now, 'cause she was concentrating on her schooling, and she had just graduated, but she was gonna be coming forward again, but I just don't wanna take her off if she's not, if she's gonna come back in, but at some point, I gotta, there's no need to keep it on there. So I guess I can reach back out to them.
I think it's a year, because I remember things being on, you know, pending, 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 it was like, this thing for like a year.
Um, so, yeah, so the storage units, meeting, um... I emailed, um, the Acton Solar, which is the Kelly Orchards, to find out, 'cause they were talking, they wanted to be on the first week in September. I was hoping to have some information from them, so I could give it to you guys, I emailed them a couple days ago, um, I still haven't had a, gotten, received a response from that, so my question to them was, are you planning on being on the first week in September's agenda? I'm getting ghosted, so, um... That's it right now. That I can, that I can think of.
Yeah, it's good for the board to be thinking about anything we wanna change that would go on before town meeting next year, we're gonna wanna start.
Or add.
Start, you know, at least coming up, brainstorming different ideas of what we might put forward.
Yeah.
So that, just, you know, once the holidays come in and everything, then all of a sudden, or a month before, we need to have it all figured out. It's good to do something in the fall.
Yeah, like that one that we missed, a public hearing or something, a newspaper.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that could be just housekeeping too, though, but it was, um, that was in the subdivision.
Was it? I couldn't remember which one it was. Has anybody heard anything about the new comprehensive plan?
Nope.
Yeah, I think we would have to get on the selectmen's agenda, or at least attend a meeting and mention it to them, probably to...
I don't want it.
To start getting anywhere, but...
Yeah, 'cause I feel like, I mean, there were some things they've done the last few years that were topical and heard from the town, like mining operations, but, um... I feel like that thing's getting pretty dated now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it has been. But they like it with the, you know, I guess, some people like it like that.
Apparently.
No. But we, you know, we, we're looking at that survey that they put out to the public in their...
Yep.
Like, the thing, what we would have, you know, what the first step would be, putting, getting, uh, get the committee together, and then they'd be putting out surveys to the residents, asking them questions that are in the comprehensive plan already, who can use the old survey as a basis. But it's not, it's not the plan board's responsibility to, to start doing that, that we kind of got shut down when we pushed on it too much before. I'm not sure.
I don't know, there were a few things over the last few years that, you know, that we started to approach, and we did, but there's nothing off the top of my head now. Maybe tweaking...
Right.
Mining or something, but, but...
Camp sites?
Or something, I don't know, but there's, I don't think there's a berm, we need to address this problem.
Well, if anybody, you know, comes up with anything.
Is that one, Davey?
Oh, do we wanna call it back?
I think we should, because he wrote us.
Okay. Oh, and also, um, the hearing...
Well, you guys, you can acknowledge that you're, you got, you're in receipt of it, and you guys can do some research on it before, you know, that's about it.
Also, we gotta cancel the, uh, the public hearing for Roland Cody on Garvin Road, it has been canceled.
Um, application has been withdrawn.
An application has been withdrawn, so...
For the subdivision on Garvin Road.
The subdivision on Garvin Road, thank you. Thanks for reminding, Gavin.
Who was here when the, this subdivision was approved? It was just you three, right?
Which one was that one?
Um, Mark Boise, was this you, John, and Gavin?
Yeah, I think so.
Those were the other ones?
You weren't here last week, I was gonna be right.
Oh, yeah, that was fine.
That's twenty, that's twenty-five foot off, yeah.
That's pretty much all I remember with it.
It was going in note nine or something?
Right, yeah, you tucked it in here somewhere, which is maxing.
With the... It's weird, it's still tied in with the law coverage, thirty percent.
Well, I don't think he was gonna make a new note, that's why he was gonna do it.
Except that fifty percent is allowed, with the hundred-foot minimum side, front, rear, that includes a twenty-five-inch dead buffer, so it's like, kinda just rolled in with the, when they allow fifty percent.
Yeah, that was kind of what it was.
But I think that was a pass.
That was, that's what we agreed on, pretty much.
It's a pass, it's on here, but... It's not really on here, but...
I mean, you can consider the building envelope, right, he's got his setbacks on there anyway, that says a seventy-five foot setback from the, the road.
Hmm?
The red's the bad building envelope.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's...
Yeah.
Where's it in?
It's written down, I, I don't know, it's, um, you know, it's... Was anything else we had to look for on that thing? If I'm saying it?
No, I think that was it.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's just a twenty-five-foot buffer. Do you want me to mention this letter that we're gonna...
No, you can just make notes that the board has received, um...
They're about animals.
People should acknowledge it.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm trying to figure out.
I, I have some ideas.
The president has asked for the board to consider zoning change for, uh...
Burial of animals?
Yeah, burial of animals.
So I'm thinking that we don't need that, I, I'm thinking that there may be something in the book already that would, um, maybe pertain to that, uh, four-point-one-three, article for protection district, and then, uh, five-point-two-seven, with regard to soils, stormwater runoff, it's some, um, verbiage in here that... So, for example, soils, all land use shall be located on soils in or about which the proposed use or structures can be established or maintained without causing adverse environmental impacts, including severe erosion, mass soil movement, improper drainage, and water pollution, whether during, after development, and other similar intensive land uses. Oops, I skipped, sorry.
What page are you on?
Uh, page eighty-four, five-point-two-seven, because this is in the soil, this animal was buried in the soil, and I think if you don't know, if, um, you have to assume that maybe it was euthanized, and then it's a serious problem. And I think maybe just asking the person to move the burial, um, within the state parameters... And I think maybe just asking the person to move the burial, um, within the state parameters, I think that would be sufficient. I don't think that we need to write.
On this law, it doesn't leave any of the setbacks.
She needs to get it out of there then. This is a shallow well. That's just my opinion. I don't think we need an ordinance. Um, I think that there's things already in our ordinance that would cover it.
What was the other one you said? 4.?
Uh, 4.13, Aqua for Protection District, basically talking about, um, you know, the water quality. Does anybody else think we need an ordinance for this?
I'm not prepared to say right now without reading through it all. I really don't know.
We don't have anything about like private family cemeteries, do we? Because I know it's possible to make your own cemetery on your property and.
Right, but that has to be.
State regulated.
Yeah.
So was in this, but they wouldn't even touch this either, so. And he called every department and then he, that department would send it to another department, then it would send it to another department. He just got to run around.
It says chapter 13 prohibits human cemeteries within 200 feet of a well, but it's not clearly state guidelines from drinking water.
What do they do with like dogs at a place like Green Rose?
Incinerate them.
Yeah, usually they.
Do you have an incinerator there?
Uh, they send them home.
Send them somewhere to be incinerated.
There are several, there's, there's one over in.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But that costs them.
It's not that much.
No?
No.
Okay.
You know, I mean, some people probably don't want to do that, but.
Yeah, but people do this for more sentimental reasons.
Yeah, to keep their ashes.
That's true.
The work next to the builder builder.
How many need an ordinance so they couldn't spread the ashes, right?
Yeah.
Well, do, what happens, yeah?
Isn't it illegal to spread ashes in certain, like, bodies of water?
I think it could be.
I really think it is.
Yeah, there you go.
Because it's, I don't know. I have to read more into it.
Right, me too. I feel like, it makes me think of the, you know, human cemetery too, and if we need something in there about cemeteries in general, they could have a footnote or a small note about pets and stuff in that. You know, as the, as the town grows, it definitely could become an issue, more of an issue.
Well, it's an issue for this guy that's next door. It's well is shallow.
It's gotta be 20 feet from a building.
I think, yeah, but 200 feet from a well.
I think the state only says 100 for the, small land.
Well, this way, this one says 100 feet plus for private wells, public roads 50, residents except the owner, 100 plus feet, non-resident except owner, 50 plus.
I think there's this conflicting thing. Some say 50 feet, some say 100 feet. It all depends on where, what article you're reading.
For the.
And he's, his gripe was, or his intention was, he was around 40 feet, so.
Yeah.
Well, she was, that person, individual was around 40 feet from, they buried her 40 feet from her.
Yeah. Well, even just cemeteries in the shoreline zone.
Just make sure you put a note on it and the animal control officer will, will deal with this.
Well, attend to any details, site, site details, nothing.
Well, then it goes to burying a dog in your backyard. Risk of burying a dog in the backyard, poisoning could happen if your dog died from euthanasia.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is there will be issue, I think.
It seems like.
How was the dog deceased?
Kind of vulnerable on.
Yeah, then the study shows that the drug becomes more concentrated as the years go by, even when the body has already decayed. This was proven in the case of dogs dying, started to show up and in their autopsy, the results showed that it caused by, I don't even know that word, I'm not even going to try.
Yeah.
What I mean, here you go.
But where's that side from? And though, Bart, I don't know.
Well, that's what I mean, you know, I mean if it's. You guys got some reading material?
Yeah.
If you guys decide that's what you were, where you want to go with them, then so be it.
Burying a dog's body in the backyard may risk water contamination. Many states in the US require dog parents to bury their beloved fur babies 100.
Okay, Chris, we got it.
Yeah, alright, John, it's your turn.
John, John.
I'm going to get German, Mr. Jim.
My second.
All in favor?